Welcome to the League of Women Voters of Clickatatt and Skamania Counties 2020 Virtual Candidate Debate. Norma?
Good evening and welcome. We're recording tonight's debate. I am Norma Benson, a member of the Leadership Team of the Nonpartisan League of Women Voters of Washington, Clickatatt and Skamania Counties at Large Group. Our group, along with the Golden Dale Sentinel, is pleased to present to you the candidates for Clickatatt County Commissioner, District One, Joanna Turner and Jacob Anderson. This debate is an opportunity for these candidates to present their views and positions so that you, the voter, can make a more informed decision when you mark your ballot. Go to the League of Women Voters of Washington website, LWVWA.org, to learn more about what we do. The League also sponsors an online voters pamphlet with candidate and issue information at votefor11.org. Most importantly, in order to vote, you must be registered to vote. You can do that online or at an elections office near you. Our VoteFor11 site has more information. And now to get into the debate, I introduce our moderator Tammy Kaufman, who will briefly explain the debate procedures. Tammy has been active in both Clickatatt and Skamania Counties since moving to the area in 2008. She is the past president of the Rotary Club of White Salmon Bingeon, has served as a volunteer firefighter and EMT, is a charter member of the One Gorge Bi-State Regional Advocacy Organization, and currently serves as a Skamania County appointee to the Columbia River Gorge Commission. Thank you, Tammy, for joining us this evening.
Thank you, Norma, and good evening, everyone. It's a pleasure to be here. Welcome back to both of our candidates this evening, Ms. Joanna Turner and Mr. Jacob Anderson. Welcome, both of you. So the candidates tonight have received the ground rules for the debate in advance and have agreed to abide by them. For the audience, here are a few of our guidelines. The candidates did not receive our questions in advance. The questions were gathered from League members, co-sponsors, and the public. Candidates have agreed to stay on topic and will have 60 seconds to respond to each question. I will read each question in full to both candidates. Tonight's debate format will allow rebuttals. When a candidate asks for a rebuttal, they will have 30 seconds. The other candidate will then have 30 seconds to respond. We do not have a time limit, I'm sorry, a limit on the number of rebuttals, but I will ask the candidates to move on to another topic if no new information is being shared or if we have more topics that we need to get to. Additionally, candidates will have one opportunity to question each other directly, excuse me, to ask one question directly to their opponent, who will have one minute to respond. Then the candidate who posed the question will be given one minute to reply in their response. We will have a timekeeper visual for all participants. The timekeeper screen will go yellow with 15 seconds remaining and will go red when time is up. If necessary, I will interrupt any candidate to complete their sentence and then discontinue their answer once the allotted time has been exceeded. So that we can all focus on the candidates during the debate, the webinar chat function has been disabled. If you have any questions, please email the League of Women Voters at the address on your timekeeper screen, All candidates who are on the ballot for Clickatatt County Commissioner, District One position, Jacob Anderson and Joanna Turner, were invited to this debate and they are both here tonight. And we will now have time for introductions. We flipped a coin before the event and Mr. Anderson is going to be first for the opening statement. That means Ms. Turner will go first during the closing statements. Each candidate will have one minute. Mr. Anderson, please tell us a little bit about yourself and why you are running for office.
Tammy, thank you so much for hosting this and thank you to the League of Women Voters for providing this presentation. People don't understand how difficult it is to run a race in COVID. We don't have all of the usual things that we go to. We don't have our parades, we don't have our rodeos, we don't have our county fairs. This has been an awful year to try to get to know people. Both Joanna and I are doing our best to get out there, to be involved. We feel so thankful for all of you who are here, who are listening, who are paying attention, who really care about local politics. I don't know how many of you watched the presidential debate, but I can tell you that this one is going to be far more professional, far more courteous, and probably far more informative. So thank you all for signing on, and I look forward to this vivid discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Ms. Turner, please tell us a little bit about yourself and why you are running for office.
Thank you, Tammy. I appreciate the opportunity to do this again. My name's Joanna Turner and I'm running for Clickatatt County Commissioner because in Clickatatt County, we have a problem. And that problem is that citizens' concerns are not getting met, their needs are not getting met, and their voices are not getting heard. This is a problem. This is a problem that has been going on for decades now, and it needs to change. Citizens need to be informed about what's going on, they need to be taken care of, and that is absolutely the county's job and responsibility. What we have in our county is a political machine, one that is only vested in repeating business as usual and serving the same needs that it has always served, which is special interests, and not you, the citizen. This absolutely needs to change. Like Jake said, you know, we've been working hard and there's lots of great people in Clickatatt County that are just not getting their needs met. So we can do better. We can have better discussions, better decisions, and better outcomes, and that's why I'm running.
Thank you, Ms. Turner. And both of you, that was a perfect segue to our first question. How do you plan to become more accessible to Clickatatt County residents? How will you reach out to the public before making decisions? Ms. Turner, we'll begin with you.
There's lots of ways that the commission can be more accessible. The first is by making their meetings accessible on Zoom, where people can actually see who's talking and they can call in and participate other than just on the phone. But the times of the meetings need to change. The meetings are held at 1:00 on Tuesday afternoons. Most people work during the day or have kids that are in school or just responsibility that they're tending to at 1:00 in the afternoon. So not only do the times of the meetings need to change, but I think once we can start going back out and actually connecting with folks directly, then we need to have meetings in the communities that we serve so that we can actually connect with people and meet their needs. The community councils need to be heard more, they need to be listened to. I know that they're an advisory board, but they're the ones that are really connected, especially to these non-incorporated communities. And so we have to do a better job of listening to them and taking their needs into consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Turner. Mr. Anderson, how do you plan to become more accessible to Clickatatt County residents? How will you reach out to the public before making decisions?
Thank you, Tammy. I'm the first one to say that people feel disenfranchised with their county commissioners and the meetings and being able to be involved, especially during COVID, where we can't go and sit in a commissioner's meeting. I'll be the first one to say that it is my hope to ensure that all meetings and videos are posted online for all commissioners. Also, we want to be able to allow to ensure that people can call in to give their comments so they don't have to drive all the way to Golden Dale in order to give comments, whether it be written or oral. We need to do better at that. I have a business marketing degree. That is, my background is marketing and getting information out there. The commissioners have, to be honest, done a poor job of really telling all of the great things that they've done over the last years. This is probably because most of them are pretty humble and they're always trying to do the good work. I take a little bit of issue with trying to change the regular meeting times. That's difficult to do.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. And we'll move to our next question. What are the most important challenges facing our county and how do you propose to address them? Mr. Anderson, we'll begin with you.
Our most important challenge is right now, of course, is COVID. It has changed the way that we communicate, it has changed the way that we interact with others. It is increased depression, loneliness. It has done huge amounts of damage to our collective psyche as a community, as in a county. Just being friends with people is more difficult these days. In terms of what it's going to do over the long run, it is going to have an impact, a major impact, on both the state and county budget. We're going to have to deal with this over the long term. This isn't something that if we found a cure tomorrow, everything goes back to normal. No, there's going to be a lot of hurt for a long time. And thankfully, the county is in a good financial position to manage this. We can be there for the people, we have to be there for our businesses. We have to continue to listen and adapt quickly to the changing environment that we're in right now.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Ms. Turner, what are the most important challenges facing our county and how do you propose to address them?
Thank you. We need to have a strategic plan. Yes, COVID has been a huge challenge, but without a strategic plan so that we can plan for managed growth, we don't know where we're going. We need to have something that says this is where our county's going, this is what it looks like, this is what we want it to look like. And part of that is broadening our economic base. We absolutely need to do a better job of getting a broader, more economic development that isn't just set in one or two things so that when those things go away, we see a recession like we've seen in some places in the county. So those are the two things that we absolutely need to focus on. Yeah, making our county more resilient, what Jake absolutely said about mental health is super, super important, but that needs to be part of our comprehensive plan. Thank you, Tammy.
Thank you, Ms. Turner. All right, we'll move on to our next question. What will you do to support a vibrant economy in our area? Ms. Turner, we'll begin with you.
Yeah, like I just said, absolutely having a comprehensive plan and managing our growth, planning for the future is so, so, so important. Part of that, you know, with our economic base, there's so many resilient people in this county. I have just met some of the most amazing people in the last nine months. And we have not only a wealth of knowledge and residents in this county, but people who are creative and who can get the job done. And so those are skills that we absolutely need to capitalize on. And inviting people into the room so that we can do that, finding out what jobs they want to have, things like certified nursing assistants. We absolutely need to be able to have a plan to care for our elderly. That seems to be something simple that we could do, that we could create jobs and create education for folks. But we need to do a better job of planning, and we have not done that.
Thank you, Ms. Turner. Mr. Anderson, what will you do to support a vibrant economy in our area?
So what the county can do is plan, and what the county has done is plan. We spent years building our 10-year plan for economic development. We brought in a variety of stakeholders, we had in-person meetings all over the county. We listened to the business owners, the employees, to find out what those directions are. The county is working through that 10-year strategic plan. It's a long plan, it's more like a 50-year plan, there's a lot of good in it. I recommend everybody go to the county website and read that plan. In terms of other things that are happening, our county does have a broad base. When you look at high tech, when you look at agriculture, when you look at renewable resources, we have a very diverse economy and we need to continue to grow that diversity within that economy. We've got amazing things coming down the pipeline with partnerships with the Columbia Gorge Community College, training programs, workforce development programs, we're doing a great job.
Thank you. Ms. Turner, do you have a rebuttal?
I do, because again, these are the same special interests that have been informing the same choices and decisions, the same things that have been coming into the county. There is not a diversity of discussions at the table, and this is what has to change. We need to have better discussions that are absolutely more inclusive. So we need to have better planning that includes the actual residents and not just special interests.
Thank you, Ms. Turner. Mr. Anderson, do you have a reply?
Sure. All meetings for the Economic Development Authority are posted online according to the Public Records Act and the Open Public Meetings Act. We do our best to put it in the newspaper when these meetings are being held. We've had meetings around the county for this. People, the people who are interested show up. Having facilitated meetings for years, getting people to show up is usually the most difficult thing to do. And it takes a lot of time, effort, and marketing, and I think we did a great job with the 10-year plan.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Okay, we will move on. Per the Clickatatt County website, the Under Canvas Columbia River Gorge Project is a proposal to create a seasonally operated 95-tent luxury camping facility with individual canvas tents for sleeping quarters. Camping would be offered April through October, weather-dependent. The site would be accessed via Oak Ridge Road, a county road with private easements across adjacent parcels. The property is located between Huesum and Beezy Corner, east of State Highway 141. And the proposed project will be sited on approximately 118 acres, of which a majority would remain designated in forestry land use. Please share your position of the Under Canvas Conditional Use Application. We'll begin with Mr. Anderson.
Thank you, Tammy. As I said in the newspaper, I have not taken a personal opinion on the Under Canvas. I have not taken a position from my role with Clickatatt County Natural Resources. I have not taken a position as my role with the County Planning Department. And I think that it's best to not take a position on this. This is something that is going to go in front of the Board of Adjustment. The project itself is under the conditional use through the resource land designation, and that has a process, and I think we need to adhere to that process. And because I'm involved with the Community Council, the county, and the Planning Commission, I've said that I'm going to remove myself from that discussion because I've been involved with it, and I wouldn't take a vote on it as a county commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Ms. Turner, please share your position on the Under Canvas Conditional Use Application.
Well, I'm glad to hear that Jake's going to reclusive himself from those discussions because it is something, this is a perfect example of what we need to do better. There are so many citizens who are frustrated with this project, who have not been heard, who feel like their voices have been stifled. This is not something that has been, it isn't necessarily, and I don't want to have an opinion about this, but this is a project that there is a lot of concern about from a lot of people in the county, and they have not been heard. So we absolutely need to have better conversations about this. You know, there's better ways to do economic development, and I don't think that this kind of development is what people really want to see in our county as far as something that's going to benefit us the best. So Jake has spent a lot of time on this project.
Thank you, Ms. Turner. Mr. Anderson, do you have a rebuttal?
I'd just like to say this is something that has been brought up in the newspapers, hit pieces written about me on this project and proposal. I'm fully transparent. Our community council meetings have been recorded via Zoom. Thank goodness for Zoom. If anybody is interested that feels that the community council did not do a great job listening to both sides, giving both sides the time to speak, I would be happy to share that with you, all of those meetings. I think the community council does a great job being a conduit for information.
Thank you. Ms. Turner, you have 30 seconds to reply if you wish.
Again, this is the type of thing that I can bring more folks to the table. And where it's important, you know, my voice on the commission when I get elected will only be one vote out of three. So I'm not going to change opinions, I don't have an agenda that's going to be met, but I am good at bringing people to the table, I am good at having better discussions, and I am good at pointing out things that the status quo isn't looking at, isn't concerned about, and isn't seeing. And that's my concern with this, is that there's no checks and balances.
Thank you, Ms. Turner. Moving to our next question. A major recreational access point to the Columbia River is at the mouth of the Clickatatt River. The county has been working with the railroad for over a decade on this access. How would you work to move this forward? We'll begin with Ms. Turner.
Again, by inviting lots of folks to the table. There are so many people in Lisle who have good ideas about how to manage this bit down there and how to make it safe and accessible for people. People are going to keep using it, and right now it's a danger the way that it is. I'm concerned about people accessing it and just the safety of that. So again, we really need to be including our citizens in these conversations. I mean, if it's been a conversation that's been happening for 10 years, then why hasn't it been moved forward, would be one of my questions. This is something that is important. These are the types of things that need to see movement because these are the types of things that take care of our citizens. So it's projects like this that would not only create, you know, people could access it better and use it, and that's great for everybody in our community.
Thank you, Ms. Turner. Mr. Anderson, a major recreational access point to the Columbia River is at the mouth of the Clickatatt River. The county has been working with the railroad for over a decade on access. How would you work to move forward on this?
Thank you, Tammy. I'm not worried just about the mouth of the Clickatatt. I'm also worried about the mouth of the white salmon, and I'm worried about Huesum. All of these issues have two things in common. And well, for two of them, it is the railroad as well as the State Department of Transportation. Getting through their processes is difficult. Trying to think outside of the box with them is really difficult. We've had amazing ideas on ways to fix the traffic problems in Huesum, but trying to get movement between the Department of Transportation is like pulling teeth. It takes a lot of effort. Sometimes it takes people just retiring before you can finally make movement, like we are finally getting some movement at Huesum. And it hasn't been just 10 years, we're talking 20 years. And it literally goes on and on and on. And sometimes there are no answers, but I think that we can find answers if we can get enough support from not just the locals, but also our state representatives and federal representatives.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Ms. Turner, do you have a rebuttal?
Yeah, because like Jake said, if we're waiting for people to retire to fix problems like this, that's indicative of this political machine that is just reinventing itself over and over and over again. And the people that are entrenched in it, and things need to change. If we're waiting for people to retire to fix problems that are affecting our citizens every day, this is a problem. We need to be able to do this differently. And you know, Jake's a nice guy, but if he's elected, I don't think the capacity to change, to do it differently, is going to happen.
Mr. Anderson, you have 30 seconds to reply.
Of course. And Joanna, when I said that, I did not mean county employees that are the people that you have to wait to retire. I'm talking state employees as well as federal employees in some instances. And you know what? As a county commissioner, you live within a very small box of what you have control over. You have to bring people who have control over those other interests in order to make that change. That's what I was trying to get at.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. We'll move to our next question. Clickatatt County is a leader in green energy. In what ways will you continue us on that path? Mr. Anderson, we'll begin with you.
The first thing that we can do is we can support the pump storage project. Clickatatt County is a hub of green energy. We're on the front lines of fighting the climate crisis. We are the ones that have the natural resources that we are using in a renewable way to create success and capitalize for the central and east end of our county. These jobs that have come in, whether it be the wind turbine techs or the RNG plant out of the landfill, these are good-paying, family-wage jobs where people live in this county, they work in this county, and they have educations and degrees. And a lot of them have went to Columbia Gorge Community College to get these degrees. They're actually locals for many of them. These are the types of economic development that we can support. In terms of what we can do with, I'm going to run out of time, but there's a lot of things we can do with the pump storage project in order to ensure that our locals are the ones that are being hired for many of these jobs.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Ms. Turner, Clickatatt County is a leader in green energy. In what ways will you continue us on the path?
Yeah. So on the surface, I think the pump storage project looks like a great idea. It checks all the boxes, right? But when you dig deeper, there are a lot of concerns with the pump storage project. And I don't know everything that there is to know about it. Jake's been on this for a lot longer, obviously, than I have. And when I'm elected, there I will have a lot to learn, and that's easy, I can learn that. But the problem is, is that we need to take other things into consideration when we're talking about projects like this, and not just how it looks on the surface. Historically, there's been lots of problems that have run through the county that haven't necessarily benefited everybody. This is an opportunity to have dispersed energy systems. We can encourage solar panels on people's houses, and there's all sorts of other things that we can do. Take a look at the fleet that we're driving, things like that. There are things that we can do around energy storage, but the pump storage is something that I think we need to look really critically at and just be smart about how we're doing this. We don't want any more oopses. We don't want any more tax burden on our residents.
Thank you, Ms. Turner. Mr. Anderson, you have a rebuttal?
I'd really like to know what issues you actually have with pump storage, Joanna. When I look at pump storage, I'm looking at $2 to $3 million of additional tax revenue into this county just from the property tax. I'm also looking at the sales and use tax that's anywhere from $500,000 to $1 million on a general fund that only is $4.5 million of income. That is a huge change that will continue to help the county out. And that's just for Clickatatt County. That's not including all the junior taxing districts, that's not including the state that's going to benefit from it, and that's not including all of the good that it's going to do for load balancing of our electrical system.
Ms. Turner, would you like to reply?
Yeah, and I have a question first. So Jake, is that your direct question to me?
No.
Okay, so can we reset the timer? Sorry.
Yes, we will reset the time.
Thank you, because it sounded like it. But there's a lot of issues with this and things that need to be discussed. It's on Yakima cultural grounds. And historically, the Yakima tribes, their voices haven't been heard in discussions about things that directly affect them. That's a problem. We need to just stop making decisions that affect other people. But there's concerns about how viable it is, the longevity of it. Some of the similar concerns that happened when the wind turbines were brought in. Dispersment needs to happen with green energy. It can't be focused like that, and it can't be big projects that have potential disastrous effects.
Thank you, Ms. Turner. Moving to, I'm sorry, Mr. Anderson, do you have a rebuttal? You'll need to turn your microphone on, please.
Thanks. I'd just love to agree that dispersed energy use is something that we can all get behind, whether it be solar panels on your houses or small-scale wind turbines. There are a lot of things that each of us can do. The thing that I like to focus on is that our county is a renewable resource hub for the entire region. And pump storage will cement us in terms of being that resource hub for the region. It will further help new wind turbine projects, solar panel projects, as well as all the businesses that want to locate here because we're a renewable resource hub.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Ms. Turner, would you like to respond?
Yes, at what cost? You know, so many times we jump into green projects because they're green and we think that they're great, but at what cost? I don't think we're actually looking at the cost that some of these projects have. And if we're looking at the longevity for these things, 10, 20, 30, 40, 50 years down the road, we absolutely have to be taking that into consideration right now. This is one of the things that I can bring to the table, that we will have better discussions instead of just looking at a project on the surface and saying, oh, this is a great project with some good tax benefits.
Thank you, Ms. Turner. Mr. Anderson?
When you look at the costs, if you've ever gone through an environmental assessment, an EA or an EIS, you look at the costs. We spend millions of dollars looking at all of the costs. We find mitigation, we do what we can to do the best that we can. You'll see the exact same kind of cost with the replacement of the Hood River Bridge. Just the environmental studies alone are going to be in the tens of millions of dollars. We do look at the cost. It's required by state and federal statute. We don't just go willy-nilly doing these things.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Ms. Turner?
Just because you might look at the cost and do some studies doesn't mean that you're actually having the conversations and looking at what's really, really happening and the long-term effects of that. So there's a fault line under where the dam is going to be, the impacts to wildlife. There's a lot of concerns that we can talk about. And you know, granted, like I said before, my voice on the commission is only one out of three. So my agenda at the end of the day, you know, won't necessarily, doesn't really matter. But we need to be having the conversation better.
Thank you, Ms. Turner. Mr. Anderson, do you have anything further on this topic?
We can move on.
Thank you. All right, there was a good segue as you were speaking about the tribes, as you were talking about that answer. So the next question is, there are many tribal and Latino/Latina community leaders in our area. How are you planning to work with them to ensure our county government listens to their needs? Ms. Turner, we'll begin with you.
I think that there's lots that we can do just in the terms of policies that are inclusive and inviting. So I'd like to say again that I'm proud that I am endorsed by the Confederated Tribes and bands of the Yakima Nation. They've never endorsed anybody in Clickatatt County before. And that just goes to show that I can have conversations with people and bring people to the table and create bridges where there haven't been any. And that is vitally important to the resilience of our communities, all of them. As we grow, as we change, we need to be able to have conversations, listen to people, and respect where they're coming from and find some middle ground. This isn't just about us, this is about the future generations. And so this is a really... And so this is a really, really important topic that we can bring people to the table. We need to have things in Spanish. I mean, that's something that's easy that we can do. So that's just the tip of the iceberg of what we can do to make our commission and our local government more inclusive.
Thank you, Ms. Turner. Mr. Anderson, there are many tribal and Latino/Latina community leaders in our area. How are you planning to work with them to ensure our county government listens to their needs?
We have to invite everybody to the table for all discussions. I've always tried to do that with all of the things that I've been involved in. I've always worked with the Yakima Nation Tribal Fisheries Group. I call Chief Johnny a friend of mine. I think that what we have to do is continue like Joanna said, get the information out there in Spanish. That's something our Emergency Operations Center has been doing now that we have a public information officer there. We need to do that in other parts of county government as well. It's been lacking. What we're doing right now is when we have job openings, we're advertising on the Spanish radio channels. We're working in the right direction. And I think there's always more that we can do with everything. And I think we can continue to move that dial in the right direction.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Moving to our next question. How can you support our medical first responders in your role as county commissioner? Mr. Anderson, we'll begin with you.
Our first responders in this county, many of them are volunteer. They give up their nights, their weekends. They don't take pay. They do it because they love their community. They do it because they volunteer. I don't know if there's a project that the county commissioners, that's been in front of the county commissioners that has not supported, that they do not, or that they have not tried to give matching funds to. We do what we can at the county level in order to support all of our first responders. And we have to. Those are the people in our communities who give so much of their time, their life, their energy to our fire, our EMS. They do everything they can, and it's our duty to support them however we can.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Ms. Turner, how can you support our medical first responders in your role as county commissioner?
Yeah, I completely agree with Jake that we need to support them better and 100%. But one of the things that we can do is reduce our wildlife urban interface. That's a huge concern in our county. We have to stop wasting resources on fighting fires to protect houses that are built in the middle of the woods. This is something that planning would also help to do. I mean, we have amazing firefighters and they go out to fight fires and to try and keep houses safe. And they're not able to because of this problem. So if we did better urban planning, better economic development as far as strategic planning went for this, then that would also help to keep our firefighters safer in the long run. So better support for them, better continuity of care for them, and maybe some benefits.
Thank you, Ms. Turner. And for both of you, I'm gonna reopen this one more time because the question was directed at medical first responders. So Jake, I'm gonna give you 30 more seconds if you would like to use it to talk more specifically about medical first responders.
So medical first responders, I don't know if you're getting at the mental health first responders that is an issue in our county, that they have to have the support of police in many instances in order to go. That's the, that ties the two together. In terms of medical first responders, if you're talking about the, our hospital districts, that's what the hospital district board is for. That's what the levies are for. That's why we support our levies when it comes to those things.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. And Ms. Turner, in regards to medical first responders?
Yeah, so a lot of our medical first responders are also our firefighters. And so they come when 911 is called. They are the first responders at people's houses. And so making sure that they have the resources that they need to tend to people well, and simply like masks, that sort of thing. I know that we've been pretty set for that for a while, but we need to make sure that they have the equipment that they need because they can't do their job if they don't have the necessary equipment.
Thank you, Ms. Turner. We'll move to our next question. Have your priorities for the county changed since you first began your campaign? Are the key issues the same for you now as they were when you announced? We'll begin with Ms. Turner.
That's a great question. And I think they are. They've changed a little bit in how I talk about them, but I think the key issue is that the system is broken. We need to include more people in it. There are no checks and balances. It's been one voice at the table for far too long. You know, there's another race in the county in District 3, and there's two Republicans running over there. And one of them is basically saying the same exact thing that I am. This system is broken and it needs to change. We can and have to do better by the people of this community, or we will not continue to have a community that we know and love. So my other priorities tie into that too, like access to mental health care. How do we do that? Not only access to mental health care, but access to affordable mental health care. It's one thing if someone can get to a counselor, but another if they can pay them. And then again broadband. But it all comes back to the same conversation being had, the same special interest being served, and we have to do this differently.
Thank you, Ms. Turner. Mr. Anderson, have your priorities for the county changed since you first began your campaign? Are the key issues the same for you now as they were when you announced?
I have had some changes throughout this campaign. Mental health has really risen with regards to my campaign in terms of where it was. It was outside my wheelhouse to begin with. I did a lot of listening and a lot of learning, discussions with people in the community, with our police force to really move that. In terms of a broken system, I don't understand what this system that is so broken is because we have a public process. The public process is enshrined in law. If, and it almost feels like, the great part is, is that no matter what, the District 1 new representative on the Board of County Commissioners is gonna be somebody new. And I think both Joanna and I listen to everyone. I think both Joanna and I care about everyone. I think that the community is going to be served no matter what. And I'm really fortunate that we both care so much.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Ms. Turner, do you have a rebuttal?
Yeah, because the biggest difference between Jake and I listening to people is how we've learned how to listen. Jake has been groomed by the status quo and by the special interest in this community. You know, he has learned on the taxpayer dime as an employee for the county, what's what. So other things that I can learn. But this is the problem. We need a more equitable system, and we haven't had that. We need to have different voices at the table so that that can happen. And I am sorry to say, but if Jake gets elected, it's going to be more business as usual.
Thank you, Ms. Turner. Mr. Anderson, you have 30 seconds to reply.
I'm not sure what grooming you're talking about, other than the grooming I do every morning of myself. If you look at my history, if you look at my past, I have been publicly elected to many of the boards that I've served on, whether it be the Conservation District, or the Community Council, or the Irrigation District. I've been, I've been elected by the public to represent the public. That was the people's choices. So when you say that I've been groomed, I don't, I take issue with that.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Ms. Turner?
Yeah, I completely understand why you would take issue with that. But I would encourage people to go to the PDC's website, the Public Disclosure Commission, and see who's donating to our campaigns. I mean, it's right there in black and white, who's donated to Jake's campaign and who's donated to my campaign. And you can see who those special interests are. You can see the people that both of us are gonna be beholden to. I am proud to say that I have over 110 unique individuals who've donated to my campaign, and they're all small amounts because they're all working folks who are just trying to get by in the world.
Thank you, Ms. Turner. Mr. Anderson, would you like to reply?
I've never asked for a dime in my campaign. People who have given to my campaign are people that I've worked with in the past, that I've served on volunteer boards with in the past, people that I've been elected to boards with in the past. I don't know how you can feel that you would be beholden to anyone. When you think about what a commissioner does, what they actually do, the box that we live in, our actual amount of decision-making ability is actually very low. People think that commissioners have all this power, but in reality, they don't.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. That brings us to our next question.
So, can I add something to that?
Yes.
Okay. Yep, yep. So I understand what you're saying about the actual decision-making ability, but the commissioners have the responsibility to set the tone for our county. For example, our budget, this is a moral document. And when you look at some of the things that are being prioritized in this way, those are absolutely things that the commissioners have control over. And those things can change. We can have better discussions about where our money is going and what we're spending it on and how we are making residents' lives better.
Thank you, Ms. Turner. Mr. Anderson, would you like to respond? You'll need to turn your microphone on, please.
Thanks. Every year, we go through the budget process. The budget process takes months. The public is invited to comment. The public is invited to attend. The public is invited to have these discussions and conversations. The budget is a living document. It also changes throughout the year with supplemental documents, there's new information and hopefully new funds come in. These are the kind of things that you're making these comments about, that there's a process. And anybody can be involved in the process, and everybody is invited to be involved in this process as it's currently written.
Thank you.
It's enshrined in state law.
We are gonna move on. And that does actually segue to the next question. Have you reviewed the latest county budget? If so, what changes would you prioritize in the next budgeting session? And we'll begin with Mr. Anderson.
Of course, I've reviewed the budget. The budget is one of the most important parts of a county commissioner's position. The budget sets that tone for the county government. That budget is multiple rings if you actually get into the meat and potatoes of the budget, not just the budget overview that most people see that seems like a lot, you know, how many pages it is, but it's nothing compared to that actual budget. When you start piecing the budget down and start looking at the colors of money and where they come from, what we actually have for discretionary spending in the budget is actually very small. And our movements can have to be very small. They have to, or we have to direct our Public Works Director or our Economic Director to go out and find the funds somewhere else. Because unless we bring in a bunch of new money or we raise taxes, what we actually have to move is actually very small. But the budget discussions, if you've ever sat in a county commissioner meeting, sure some of them can be dull, but you can learn a heck of a lot.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Ms. Turner, have you reviewed the latest county budget? If so, what changes would you prioritize in the next budgeting session?
Absolutely. And I have to say that the budget as it is, is kind of a hard document to access. There are not notes. There's not explanations about decisions. It is not clear where a lot of money is coming from or going to. And so being clear with a document that is being put out to the public so the public can look at it and understand it is vital to the needed transparency that we need on this commission. So that is something that I would absolutely make sure gets addressed. But when we prioritize things like healthcare for people and look at it through a prevention lens, things change. And I know I've mentioned this before, but for example, money spent on at-risk youth on our county is peanuts compared to the money that is spent on our juvenile hogs program. And that's not okay. If we're spending money on juvenile programs and not spending money at prevention and supporting families, we are doing something wrong. We need to change the focus and we need to have different priorities.
Thank you, Ms. Turner. That brings me to another question. What steps, if any, should be taken to curb drug use in our communities? And how can you support those steps in your role as county commissioner? And we'll begin with Ms. Turner.
Thank you. Prevention is key to building a sustainable and resilient community. Prevention and supporting families with things like access to mental health care that they can afford, wraparound services, you know, things like support for families who are in need, who might have two working parents or a single working parent. How can we build the community that we want to see, which actually encourages our children to stay here and be vibrant and vital parts of our communities? We do that really, really well in some places, and so I would like to grow those and just spread that out to the whole entire community. I think prevention, when we look at interpersonal violence, things like that, prevention is where we have to spend time educating people. And it's not just our kids, it's our families too, supporting them from the ground up all the way through our local government.
Thank you, Ms. Turner. Mr. Anderson, what steps, if any, should be taken to curb drug use in our communities? And how can you support those steps in your role as county commissioner?
We are one piece of a very big pie and a very big puzzle when it comes to drug use and prevention. I agree that prevention is one of the most important things that we can do. If we can prevent drug use, we prevent many of the people that end up in our jail system. That costs us a lot of money. That costs our citizens, our community, our society, a lot of money. When those drugs also infect, that then becomes a mental health issue. Those mental health issues are also in our jail system. And we need to do a good job getting people clean, getting people solar, getting them the help they need. But we are one piece of a very large puzzle. And we can do, we can continue to push, we can continue to advocate, but there's also other pieces that have to happen. It happens in the school. It happens with the police department. It happens with the locals. And really what it does, it comes down to volunteerism in your community, making sure that our youth, it all starts with our youth. Our youth have direction, they have purpose, they have value, and those are the ways that we prevent this from happening.
Thank you very much. Ms. Turner, you have a rebuttal?
I would just like to add something too, because we also need, you know, when we have priorities that are people-focused, we do things like have a domestic violence shelter. We are one of two counties in the whole entire state that doesn't have a domestic violence shelter. We don't have mental health treatment for youth, well, or for anybody in this county. They have to go out of the county. The same with drug addiction. People have to go so far away. If people could be tended to in our county, not only would that create jobs, but it would create a better infrastructure for families in our communities.
Thank you, Ms. Turner. Mr. Anderson, would you like to respond?
I think we can move on. The boy walking by, kinda, he's learning, and then he had, that was about as long as I think he can stay quiet for.
All right, no worries. Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Our next question. What county departments are you most interested in helping or changing? Please explain how and why. We'll begin with Mr. Anderson.
In terms of county departments that need help, right now, our Emergency Management Department needs a lot of help. They have been going nonstop since March. We need to support them any way we can. It's amazing how, when you look at how commissioners, a three commissioner board, each one of them kinda go their own separate ways. Some of them work with internally, within the departments. One of them is usually in Olympia advocating for the county and what we're doing, or going to DC and being involved. I think the most important thing a commissioner can do, and the commission together can do, is choose good people for their department heads, good people at the department head that have the right standards. And I think we have done a great job with our department heads. I think we can do, what we need to do is support our department heads so that they can do the best job that they can with the available funds they can. Nobody's getting more money this upcoming year. It's just a fact of the matter.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Ms. Turner, what county departments are you most interested in helping or changing? Please explain how and why.
Yeah, I would have to agree with Jake that our Emergency Management Department needs a lot of support right now and moving into the future. But the other thing I want to comment on is, you know, again, when we have consistently one voice at the table, you know, you have people that typically hire people that look like them, or think like them, or have the same responses that they do. It's just the way that it is, unfortunately. When you have different voices on the commission that can bring in different thoughts and different opinions, things are going to change. You're going to see a more diverse perspective, and that is going to create a trickle-down change throughout all the departments. You're going to see people be more involved and caring more, and you're not gonna, you're gonna have more transparency, and it's gonna be a more equitable system. And I think that that's what we all want, because when we have a more equitable system, it serves our residents, and their lives will be better.
Thank you, Ms. Turner. Mr. Anderson, you have a rebuttal?
Having gotten to know many of the department heads over the past five years I've worked for the county, there is not enough good things that I can say about our county employees, about their work ethic, about how they are involved in the community. These people live here, they work here, they care, they do an amazing job. We are doing everything we can to try to grow our next set of leaders for our departments locally, because if you have any idea how difficult it is to hire somebody from outside the area to move to Goldendale, to run a department, you should talk to our Human Resources Manager.
Thank you. Ms. Turner, would you like to reply?
Yes, because that brings up a great point. Yeah, it's hard to get people to move to Goldendale, and part of the reason is because we don't have a lot of safe and affordable housing in Goldendale. So housing is something that absolutely needs to be prioritized, and safe housing, housing that people want to come to, that would help create better access for mental health care providers, too. So that is something that needs to be prioritized, but has not been prioritized as well as it should be. So we need to see changes there.
Thank you, Ms. Turner. So now we are towards the end of our evening, and we would like to give each of our candidates an opportunity to ask a direct question of the other, and then they will have a chance to respond to that as well. We'll begin with Ms. Turner. Do you have a question for Mr. Anderson?
I actually do. So Jake, on your website, under endorsements, it lists that you're endorsed by the Washington State Farm Bureau, and it says that you look forward to supporting their mission. If you look at their mission, at their actual creeds and their family values, they are not creeds and family values that I would hope that you would endorse or look forward to, you know, continuing, because some of them frankly aren't very inclusive.
Mr. Anderson? You'll have 60.
I must have missed the question in there, and that is, do I support the mission of, or the creed of the Farm Bureau? My family's been a Farm Bureau member for many years. My generation is different from my parents' generation and our previous generations. I'm not a, I'm fiscally conservative, but I'm far more socially liberal than our parents' generation. That seems to happen every year. When I talk about the mission of the Farm Bureau, and I'm supported by the Farm Bureau, I'm talking about what they do to support at a state level our agricultural communities, our agricultural beliefs in providing food, fiber, and equity, and a good pay for their workers throughout the state. And I think the Farm Bureau, having served on many different boards at the state level, and having heard the Farm Bureau's input, I think they have valuable input for the state.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Ms. Turner, you have 60 seconds to respond.
When you talk about socially liberal values, and you are supported by organizations that don't, that only have one idea of what that looks like, that's concerning. And when you have organizations that support people that don't support every member of our community, that's a big concern. And so I just wonder about how the other residents of our community feel, knowing that they're not included in those values.
Thank you, Ms. Turner, and I apologize that that was a 30-second clock. If you have anything further to say, you can have an additional 30 seconds.
Thanks, that's it.
All right. Now we'll turn to Mr. Anderson. Mr. Anderson, do you have a direct question that you would like to ask to Ms. Turner?
Sure. Joanna, I saw you down by the Houston Bridge, and you were holding up a sign, and it was at the protest on the Lower Spring Creek logging. And I just would love to hear the reason why you chose to protest that logging operation on Lower Spring Creek and what it meant for you.
Ms. Turner?
Yeah, for the same reason that I chose to run this race, so that we can have better discussions about things. I think when people's voices aren't being heard, the only way that they have to get attention to a thing is by protesting. And when you have that many people out there trying to draw attention to something and encourage citizens to ask questions, that's a good thing. It's a good thing for people to say, hey, what's going on? So I absolutely support our local businesses, including logging, because logging has been a vital part of our community, and it still is. It's not something that's going to go away. And the people that work for SDS and in that industry, they absolutely need to be supported as vital parts of our community. So I'm not so much protesting that, but it's the conversation that needs to be happened. We need to be concerned about our environment and about protecting it, and I don't think that that happens all the time. So how can we have those conversations and make sure that wildlife is being taken care of and tended to and protected?
Thank you, Ms. Turner. Mr. Anderson, you have 60 seconds to respond.
So Joanna, we have processes with just about everything in government anymore. There's the forest practices application. For that project, it hadn't even been applied for yet when you were protesting. Nobody had even seen what the discussion is yet, because it hadn't been an application. You're already protesting something without having all the facts. If you would have looked at the forest practices application, you would have saw that that timber company, they doubled the buffers around the White Salmon River. They did a bunch of things in order to limit the environmental degradation and damage. That timber company has been a bastion of this community for nearly 100 years. They have given so much back to this community, but when people protest without the facts, that's difficult for people to manage, for the businesses to manage. And it affects morale at the timber company, it affects morale for the people who are designing these projects, and we have in Washington State the strictest forest practice standards in the nation. We do protect our natural resources.
Thank you.
Can I respond?
I'm sorry, Ms. Turner?
Can I respond to that?
You can. It's going to put us a little over time, but I think it's worthy if you have something to say. Go ahead.
I just want to say that people don't protest when they're not feeling heard. People don't get out on a highway with signs and say, there's a problem here, and there's something that you need to pay attention to, if they feel like the rules are being followed, and if they're equitable rules, and if the protections are actually happening like they say they're happening. People wouldn't be out protesting. So there's a reason why people are out there trying to raise awareness about different projects that are happening.
Thank you, Ms. Turner. Mr. Anderson, would you like to respond?
The rules are followed. Washington State Timber Companies, our timber managers, have done more for salmon recovery through the RMAP program than just about all of the state combined. Our leaders, our farmers, our ranchers, our timber companies, they are the stewards of the crown. They care about the environment just like everyone else. They're the ones out there, day in and day out, giving their life, blood, and sweat, and tears to build a better future for everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Thank you both for that. We are going to go to our closing statements at this time. You will both have three minutes, and since Mr. Anderson went first during opening statements, we'll begin with Ms. Turner.
Thanks, Tammy. Thanks, Jake. I appreciate the time to be able to come and talk to you, and thank you, everybody in Clickatack County for taking the time to pay attention. Local politics is really, really important, and you have an opportunity to make a difference this election. You have an opportunity to have a different voice at the table, one that hasn't been heard for a long time, if ever, in our county. You have the opportunity to vote for me and change the discussion, change how it's had, and change how people are thinking, to be more inclusive, to actually represent you, to have your concerns heard and maybe your needs met, because I don't think a lot of them have been. Those are the stories that I'm hearing. Again, I want to say I've met so many amazing people through this race, and so many people who have so much to offer. We need to be prioritizing those people and making life in this county better for everyone, not just a chosen few, not just the special interests, not just the same voices who have always been at the table for decades now. That needs to change in order for things to get better, and in order for things to be different, and in order for us to proactively grow this county into the county that's going to meet everybody's needs and be what you and I want it to see. This is something that I'm really passionate about. Experience, you know, specific experience working for the county isn't all that. I'm good at learning things. Learning things is, you know, something that I've proven through this campaign by getting out there and talking to people, connecting to people, hearing their stories, hearing their experience, learning who knows what and whose voices, you know, are the ones that are educated about the problems. So education, you know, experience is one thing. I absolutely have the experience to do this job, and what it takes to do this job, and to change the conversation so that we can have better discussions at the table, so we can make better decisions and have better outcomes for everybody in this county. You know, this county is a great place to live. I want to keep it that way. I want to improve it. I want to make it a better place. I don't want our kids to leave. I want our kids to stay here, and in order to do that, we need to change the conversation. In order to do that, we have to say no to special interests and stop the status quo, stop business as usual, change the conversation from what it has been. So my name's Joanna Turner. My website is friendsofjoanna.com. I would like to ask for your vote. I would like to not only ask for your vote for myself, but for the other change candidates that are running, because we have to do something different, or we will pay the price for it in the long run. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Turner. Mr. Anderson, you now have three minutes for your closing statement. Please turn your volume on and begin again.
Sorry about that. I'd like to thank all of you, the people that I've worked with over the past 20 years in this county, the people that I've gotten to know throughout this campaign, especially you, Joanna. This has been the best campaign, the best person I'd ever want to work with, somebody who listens, somebody who cares, somebody who's involved. You'd be the first person I would try to get appointed to one of the commissions, because you care so much and you're willing to go out of your way. Every moment that we spend campaigning is a time that I'm not spending with that little boy. Yes, he's been sitting here listening to this entire thing, and he's learning about politics, and he's learning to be that next generation. I guess you could say I'm grooming him. But that's what my family cares about. We care about civic service. We care about duty. We care about our community, and that's what I've always been involved in. And I've been here, my family's been here for generations. And all those things that you say are so amazing about this county, Joanna, that's because the people that have been here, the people that have worked here, the people that have built this community to make it this paradise that you love, that you came to, that's the people that we need to listen to, because we want to keep it this way. We need to continue to be involved in our community. The best thing that each one of you can do is get involved, join some sort of volunteer organization. That's what will truly build the county and the community that you live in. Who you appoint for county commissioner, most of the time, we're just running the day-to-day operations of the county. We're not out there. We can't be out there building the community, because the community is all of us. We can do a great job. We can listen. We can be involved. We can be informed. Everyone who knows me, who's been at a meeting where I facilitated, knows that I listen to everyone. I include everyone. I ask for all input. The special interests, everybody is a special interest. We are all interested in bettering our community and being involved. We all care. And you know what? No matter what, at the end of this race, or the presidential race, we're all still going to be one community. We're still going to be one family here in Clickatack County, and each one of us is going to get up tomorrow, and we're going to go out, and we're going to do the best we can for our friends, for our family, and for our county, and even our country. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Ladies and gentlemen, that concludes our questions for this evening. I want to thank both of our candidates, Joanna Turner and Jacob Anderson, for a very spirited and yet gracious debate. Thank you, both of you. On behalf of the League of Women Voters and our co-sponsor, the Goldendale Sentinel, thank you to both of our candidates for your participation tonight. Tonight's recorded coverage will be available on YouTube and on the League of Women Voters' Facebook page. Be sure to head to vote411.org if you need any other information, and please remember to mark your ballot and return it in time to be counted for the general election on November 3rd. The postal service recommends that voters mail their ballots at least one week prior to the election. Voters who choose to use a community ballot drop box should drop your ballot off by 8:00 PM on Election Day. Clickatack County has 11 Dropbox locations. Please go to the Clickatack County Auditor's webpage for those exact locations. Thank you all again for attending this evening, and please join us next week, Friday at noon, for our Lunch with the County Auditors event. Thank you both, and goodbye.